We are streaming and recording. There's a possibility. We'll see.
Just shut it all down.
As long as we have the credit.
As long as we have the credit, yeah. I'd stop myself.
All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Monday, October 13th, regular board meeting in order. We'll call, please.
Don Cuskey.
Here.
Andrew Coop.
Here.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Marion Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Nellie Shire.
Here.
Doug Kuchko. Laurie Zarbar.
And Randy, was a proper notice given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections nineteen point eight four and sixty five point nine zero of the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice Lake Runner Type, to the Eau Claire Leader and to radio stations W J M C, W J M C and W A Q E indicating the date, time and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. A proper notice was given for this meeting. We will now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I did not see anyone sign up for appearances, so we will move on to the approval of our regular session minutes from September twenty second. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, and the minutes have been approved. We have our consent agenda where we have our monthly budget and cash reconciliation report, our board bills, we have two employment resignations, and we have eight employment recommendations. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, and the consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have our report from the Wellness Committee. Welcome.
Thanks. All right, so we, the Wellness Committee met in the spring of last year. The previous year, we had gone through our triennial self-assessment in which we completed what's called the Well Sat Scorecard. And when we did that, if you remember correctly, when I spoke about that, there were many things that we didn't score high on that we didn't, we do in our district, but we're not included in policy. So we couldn't give ourselves the score because they were not included in the policy. So what we did at our spring meeting was we sat down and we looked at all of the areas that we scored a zero. The scores were zero, one or two. And so we looked at anything that we got zero score on and then looked at policy and kind of talked through, how could we reward this to improve our policies so that when we go through the next assessment, which is going to be in a year, get that score up? And so we spent quite a bit of time doing that, and we decided after we completed that, we also got several ones. So the team wanted to come together and look at the ones this coming spring. So we will do that this spring and look at the ones. When we're done with that, then we will bring those recommendations to the Policy Committee for their review to see, and then it will come to the full board to update that policy. So that then we're ready to go for the next self-assessment time period. We had several members leave us at the end of last year because of retirements, and then Diane Cozer left. And then we, people ran around and made some suggestions for new, potential new members. Jenelle Gritsmacher, Erin Johnson and Courtney Foss all agreed to be part of the team next year. We also discussed some ways that all staff are continually reminded of the wellness policy. I reached out to principals at the beginning of the year, asked them to remind them of the, you know, the different pieces of the wellness policy that they could encourage their staff to do. At mid-year, I'm going to send out another reminder email to staff to say, hey, remember, you know, if you're drinking something other than water, make sure you have it in an enclosed container, those kind of things. So I will do that again. I have that in my calendar. And then finally, we talked about potentially years ago when we had a different insurance company, there were some kind of incentives for people to do some wellness activities, things like, I don't know if you, I remember a bingo card when I was here, like if you did so many things on a bingo card, you could turn it in and then there was a drawing. And they, a few of the members said they missed that. So I brought that up to Randy. We're going to further, further input on that soon to come. But yeah, we're going to look into maybe doing some more incentives for staff to just keep their wellness up as well. So any questions? That's pretty much what we talked about.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Right, next, we have a proclamation. The School Nutrition Association has designated October thirteenth through the seventeenth of twenty twenty five as National School Lunch Week. And with that, I would entertain a motion to proclaim October thirteenth through the seventeenth, National School Lunch Week.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and it has been proclaimed, October thirteenth through the seventeenth of twenty twenty five as National School Lunch Week. Thank you. And school and district safety plans, first reading.
Yes, so with us, board members, this is a part of the information that every school district in the state of Wisconsin is required to the Department of Justice by the end of each calendar year. And so with this, that we do have completed safety plans for every building, but here's a blank one that we show the board and the public, the different pieces that are on there. I will add, in addition to, and our Safety Committee will be discussing this at the next meeting, and it's something Stephanie Bowle and Andy Jondro have been working on, those safety procedures and processes, and working to communicate those. And we have a lot of entities that use our facility before school, after school, over the course of the summer, whatever, and how do we make them as informed of our processes and procedures as we can? But this would be the first reading for this for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Any questions? All right, as Randy said, this is the first reading. This will be brought back to us for a second reading. If you have any questions or thoughts before that time, please let Randy know, and he'll bring it back to us. Next on the agenda, we have our Finance Committee meeting update. We have one action item for that update.
So I get to do the Finance Committee update because our fearless leader is watching the Brewers as we speak, so.
Wait it.
Go Doug, come on, bring home the victory. Yes, the Finance Committee met Thursday, October ninth. We, all members were present, including Randy and Victor. Notice was given, we approved the minutes. We had a, what I would call a spirited discussion about the twenty five, twenty six budget. But we approved it, and it will be presented at our budget hearing. I do want to remind everyone, although there were recent funding additions by the federal and state governments, we will still be operating in the red, though not as badly as we first thought. So there are still some decisions in our future. We reviewed then, obviously, the budget hearing documents that will be presented at our budget hearing. And that's in a couple of weeks, isn't it?
Yep.
So.
Yes.
Stay tuned. We approved the resolution that will be presented at the budget adoption hearing, setting our mill rate, that will set our mill rate. And we also approved designating fund balance in Fund eighty for future repairs and the maintenance of our pool. We approved the pool fees that were suggested. And we approved what we're calling the scholarship fee, and that's basically a fee schedule that gives discounted passes to people that would apply for them, I guess. Yeah, qualify. This is also required by federal new market tax credits, so we had to do that, and we kind of mimicked the YMCA down in Eau Claire. And at your place, we made a couple of changes to the Boys and Girls Club lease that we are going to approve tonight. And I'll just finish up, and then we can discuss that. We reviewed and approved the bills, set our next, next meeting date for November sixth, eight AM. So at your place is the Boys and Girls Club lease, and I think highlighted were a couple of the amendments that we kind of had suggested. And if anybody had any questions or comments, thoughts, otherwise I would, or I'll let Kevin entertain the motion to approve that lease.
Any questions on those changes or anything about the lease? Anybody? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve this First Amendment to the agreement to the occupancy and use agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and that agreement has been approved. So next, we get into Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting update. We met on September twenty ninth at five PM in the boardroom. We approved our minutes. We got an update from Phil on the Wisconsin State Legislature, and then we discussed a number of policies. We, we are bringing some forward to you in the first, for the first reading that were in your board packet. And that is Policy three forty two point two. That's programs for students at risk of not graduating from high school, along with the rule. Policy three forty two point three, that's a Title One program revision with the rule, Exhibit one, and Exhibit two. Policy three forty two point eight, and that is Section five oh four ADA discrimination policy, and then Policy three forty four, student progress. Policy three forty four point one, which is homework, those both have been revised, and then Policy three forty four point two, that's student progress reports to parents. And that one is for recommended deletion.
As you can see, our policy meeting was a barn burner.
Along with that. Along with that, I'm not finding my notebook. We also talked about cellphone policy at the high school mainly. The other two building levels are pretty well in place, but we did talk about the high school policy and potential changes. We're going to be asking our administrators to come back and talk to us about that, along with open campus, closed campus at the high school, and what that might look like going forward. And also talk to the administrators about that and how that could be monitored if we move forward with that. So those are the things that we talked about. These were the first readings that were in your packet, and they'll be brought back for a second reading at our next meeting. If there's anything that you have questions on or would like to see added or subtracted from those policies, please let Randy know, and we'll bring them back at our next meeting. So then we get into the information section of our agenda where we have our third Friday enrollment count from September nineteenth.
Yes, so with that, every school district in the state of Wisconsin reports their third Friday in September count. And just as a reminder, this is used, or for anybody watching or listening, this is the count that is used to set the revenue limit for every school district in the state. So sets that dollar amount. It's based off a three-year rolling average and gives you the total amount of revenue that is made up from state aid as well as local property taxes. And with that, so and in your packet was our third Friday enrollment from last year as well. And so last year at this time, we had two thousand eighty seven students, and this year's third Friday count was two thousand seventy, so down seventeen. With that, though, we, last year, we had a hundred eighty seniors, so we graduated a hundred eighty seniors out of the district. And with that, for this year, brought in, as of right now, a hundred fourteen four K students. And so with that, you would have thought we would have dropped a lot more, but we did have pretty significant enrollment over the course of the summer. And you can see, depend, like, I know the middle school, for instance, and I know Josh and Laurie are well aware of this, six thirty nine is a third Friday. I think it's actually a few more now. I think, Josh, you said this is the largest enrollment you've had at the middle school since you've been there? Yeah, and so there, you know, the high school is, is down a bit, but was to be accepted, expected with graduating a hundred eighty out and bringing a hundred sixty one in. And so with that, again, we'll continue to monitor that, and we'll talk more about that. Victor will at our budget hearing in two weeks.
Any questions? All right, thank you for that. Next, we have our Communications and Public Relations Committee meeting minutes from October seventh.
Yeah, we combined Communications and Public Relations for the first time, and we met on October seventh and decided that, you know, the purpose of our combination of communication and PR is to expand communication, not just internal, but external as well, and certainly with PR. And we also talked a little bit about expanding that committee, maybe to a few more community members and faculty members, so that's to be determined. We had a report from the different leadership team highlights from the middle school and things they were doing. And one of the things that we thought was fantastic was that the middle school raised nineteen thousand dollars in that walking event, you know, for different things like field trips and other school experience. That was great, really great. The high school team, they talked a little bit about looking at a different, sound like a different model of parent-teacher conferences that they're looking at, and meeting more during in-service time, different things to do, but they gave an example that their retreat was going to be at the Conservancy on October sixth. And I went to that, and I thought it was absolutely fantastic, and I'm glad they did that. And they talked a little bit about homecoming and focusing also on student participation again. I think that the board here has talked a lot about that. Tainer and Hilltop, they talked a little bit about safety and PBIS and four K at Hilltop and Tainer and the addition of an all-day four K. District Communication by Erin Johnson, who I think does a fantastic job, plus-plus, radio and back-to-school information, TV, Rice Lake Community, Community Media with James, who also does a good job for us. The Chronotype and Ruth we talked a little bit about and the job she does, social media and people sharing different celebrations that come up that we put on social media. And Warrior Leadership Team is taking over pieces of the video scoreboard, so that's kind of cool. Meeting wrapped up, and we're meeting again. It looks like Tuesday, December second.
Any questions? All right. Then we will move on to the school drill evaluations. High School, Warriors on Wisconsin, the Middle School and Tainer.
Yeah, those are included in your packet, and again, you've seen those before as board members, and that goes back to that safety plan. And these are pieces that, you know, were required to do different drills with students, and they're all submitted to the Department of Justice again by the end of the calendar year. And Colleen, thankfully, takes care of all of that.
Any questions?
Well, I just have a question. You know, those, those plans look pretty complex. What's the closest you can come to trying them out to see how they really work?
Yeah, I know that first staff are invited to, it's purely optional, that Monday, December twenty second, is that it? I know police are, and fire are going to be conducting some simulation exercises in the middle, at the Rice Lake Middle School. Again, staff are invited to attend. They don't have to. I know some people do plan to do that with that, but yeah, but oftentimes it's, you're talking through it with kids and doing the best you can. Unless you're going to run a full simulation like that, it's, sometimes it's hard to do. I know some districts in the past, I would say, ran over-the-top simulations that they frankly got in trouble for because they were incredibly over-the-top. But with that, yeah, you do the best you can and talk to the students as much as you can for their level, appropriately at the elementary, middle school or high school level. And, well, like I said, in December twenty second, it is, fire and police, emergency services are going to be involved in some training at the middle school specifically. Yeah, go ahead, please.
As we, as we talk about.
As we, as we talk about those types of trainings or simulations, it's a constant balance of trying to prepare kids, give knowledge to staff and students, but also it's just, it can be very traumatizing to kids to talk about intruders and things of that. So we're constantly doing what we can, but also keeping in mind the mental health of kids as you work through those things. So we try and do it in an age-appropriate way, a trauma-informed way, but you know, it's, it's scary.
Do they do like active shooter type?
Yeah, so we, you know, last year, we did reunification drills. So we took all the kids to our reunification site. This year, our more active drill was around kind of a lockdown situation. So, you know, we didn't take the kids to the point of like barricading doors, but we, it's like, okay, where would we go in this room? And all of that's, very seldom would we actually lock into a room. We would try and act and get out of the building is what we're, we're training the kids to do, just because research shows that, you know, that's going to be the, the best thing to do. But there are going to be those situations where an intruder's in a particular branch of the, the school, you can't get out. So those are the, the procedures, but always tricky, but you know, we just do our best to give them as much knowledge as we can without scaring them, I guess, so.
Any questions? Anything else you want to add, Randy?
No. It's, yeah, I'll add, it's sad we have to have these conversations, but.
Yeah, I said my worst thing was a tornado drill. Yeah, right. Drill, that was it.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you for that update. Then we have our WSB Public Policy Correspondent update, Phil.
Okay. The last time that you heard the update was on September 22nd, so I've included the information since then. There's not a terrific amount of information. Most interesting thing was that new legislation is being crafted by a couple of sponsors on the Republican side in the Senate and Assembly and being reviewed by the Legislative Review Board called LRB 5100, which is mandating or creating a council of 15 or so members, one of which must be from WASB, that requires the Department of Workforce Development to maintain a portal on the website with all the info that parents and students need to determine how to enroll their students in institutions of higher learning and receive appropriate credit for them. And also is intended to help the institutions of higher learning or require them in some cases to develop more workable procedures so that these credits can, are valid for different types of institutions, say the technical schools and colleges and transfer more efficiently from one college to the other. Currently, there are a couple of different organizations with their own sets of rules and deadlines and requirements. And I believe from what I'm reading here, it's very, currently very confusing for parents. And this is intended to unify all the different regulations and rules and make the access easy for parents and students, very easily accessible. And of course, the bottom line, it looks like, is that these students, we can get more students more efficiently qualified and into the workforce, which is why I believe that Department of Workforce Development is front and center in this. There are limited floor sessions currently. The next one's tomorrow and there, there aren't too many pieces of legislation under consideration. One, I've been pressing Dave on and I haven't gotten an answer yet, is why the Assembly Bill 174 rehiring retired staff that are drawing their annuities was pulled from a vote? I don't know, I haven't seen any information on that, so I'm going to keep bugging him about information on that. Other legislation that is likely to be considered, changes how scholarship recipients from very small schools are chosen. It mandates scheduling a one day a year when the scouts can be in schools recruiting. Apparently, they must have had trouble with access, or at least they perceive that. It requires schools to allow military recruiting access to common areas. I gather reading between the lines there that some schools have not been good about allowing military recruiters into the schools. Then there's some legislation about prohibiting certain presumably unhealthy ingredients from pre-reduced lunches, requiring sex abuse education, parental notification of alleged sex abuse by staff. And then some that might change the first day that nomination papers can be circulated from December 1st to November 16th next year, to give you a little extra time to get those 30 signatures. Federally, FCC banned E-rate funding for school buses, so kids can no longer, I guess, use their computers on school buses because they're operated off a school Wi-Fi. If you're interested on the impact of the shutdown, WASB has a link to federal updates now, I just refer you to that. And then again, I think I mentioned this last time, on September 23rd, there was a little update on the Speaker's Task Force about student mental health and negative impact, impacts of social media. The person running this stated that she intends that the committee will study the impact on children's home lives, development, bullying, grooming, and how pornography comes into play because of that. And they need to balance the principles of protecting parental rights and privacy rights with balancing small government principles and the need to protect children. So that, that could be a very useful thing because in a way, we're kind of discussing the same thing, especially in our Warriors Connection Committee and Policy. So that's all I have. Just hold your breath until the next update.
What did you say about small schools and scholarships?
If a school has less than 80 kids, the practice in awarding scholarships to say the, the number one student.
Like, they must be talking about the academic excellence.
Yeah, academic excellence. Has been.
At Rice Lake High School, we get two.
Got it.
Four here and two on the technical side as well.
So, but we can, I think we can specify because we're big enough.
Yes, we, yes.
These schools, they could select the student, but then the student was put into a pool and then the state DPI or whatever would select which students get it. So one particular school might not even have a recipient. Their, their top student might not be honored with this. So now they're saying every school can designate who their recipient is. That's what this is for.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for that update. Next, our upcoming meeting schedule. We've got on Wednesday, October 15th, this Wednesday, we have our Regional WSB meeting here in Rice Lake. Four o'clock is the session of, they've got a training session. And then at six o'clock, the program for the evening will begin. We've got a number of board members signed up for that. There's a couple, I think, that still haven't, but if you can make it, please let Colleen know, I think we can still get you signed up. And then we have some webinars that you can attend that are available. Registration is not required for those webinars. And then there is, WSB has a students can't learn if they are not there. That's November 4th, that's a Tuesday at noon. That is an online workshop, but registration is required for that. So that's different than a webinar. And then they have the WSB Fall Regional Meeting Online option. So if you aren't able to attend and you want to attend the session online, that is Thursday, November 6th at noon. That registration is also required for that. Then the Fall Legislative Conference, Saturday, November 8th in Stevens Point, that requires a registration. And then we have the School Board Convention in January. And as of right now, we have seven out of the nine board members signed up, so thank you for that. That's, that's a good crew, so thank you for that. Thank you for taking the time to, to do that. All right, and that is the upcoming meeting schedule. Daniel, you're up.
Yeah, well, in the spirit of the meeting, I'll try and keep this quick so we can all get home and watch the Brewers, but so the main thing I want to focus on is kind of what we did for homecoming and what we're going to do afterwards to try and kind of keep some of that momentum going here. So this was just kind of a general recap of what we had for homecoming week. We had a lot of stuff that we've historically had, and then we've also tried adding a couple of things, like the dress ups, dodgeball, capture flag, boys volleyball, all the same, bonfire. This was second year we've done that. The Kids' Fair was actually something new this year and I'm going to, I kind of helped spearhead that a little bit, so I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few slides. So we, of course, had the, the dress up again this year. And we had, and we had, Monday was class color gay, class color day again. And then Tuesday was anything but a backpack. Wednesday, we had, I think it was meme day. We had, I know we had meme day. We had decade day then, Wednesday, meme day, Thursday, and then the Warrior Spirit Day on Friday. So we had dodgeball, freshman, freshman team ended up winning that. Capture the flag seniors were able to win that one, however. So that was on Monday night. Then Tuesday and Wednesday, we had boys volleyball again, another senior team won that as well. Bonfire Thursday night, we did that again this year. Last year, I believe, was the first year we did that for homecoming and we had a really great turnout. I talked with a couple of the administrators as well and they were really satisfied with how many people we had coming out to the bonfire and, and also really just in general, the general participation they had for homecoming this year was something that they were really impressed with. Then we had the, the Kids' Carnival on Friday where we had Warrior Leadership Team set up a couple of like fun activities. And then we reached out to some of the, to the clubs and then some community events and organizations as well. And they just had like a little game, they had the dunk tank. Mr. Drost had wagon rides, horse rides.
Tommish was on the dunk tank.
And so we had those and then we, we gave out prizes based on like how many, how many different stations they went to and stuff. And it was, again, that was a really big hit too. We weren't sure how much support we were going to have, but we ended up having a really good turnout. I think there was at least like 150 people there, if not more, so, yeah. Then we had the, the dance as well. That was something else. We got a lot of, a lot of people out there and just a lot of, a lot of school spirit in general throughout this, this whole week. Upcoming events that we want to point out quick, we're starting to go into the final stretch for rake and run for October 25th, 26th. And the link for that, we'll be sharing it again on the Rice Lake Area School District Social Media Page this weekend. Again, that's, that's just kind of a community service thing where members of Warrior Leadership Team, members of other clubs and just high school students in general can go around and rake the yards of people who might not otherwise be able to, to do that necessarily, or just like a lot of teachers, community members, who it gives them the opportunity to, to do something nice for those teachers. Mentorship, we're going to talk a little bit about at our next meeting on Wednesday. We're going to look a little bit more into doing that. And then also potentially maybe partnering with other organizations that have a program like that going on at the high school. And then the Red Cross Blood Drives, we started to think and do some preliminary planning on them as well. Again, the Student and Staff Blood Drive is December 10th. The General Community Members Blood Drive is on March 25th. And then also, I would like to quickly note, on our meeting on Wednesday, we're also going to talk a little bit about kind of reviving the Warrior Media Team. We did a little bit with that last year and it would include like some of the graphics for the, the scoreboard, but then also like little things on, on social media or like, we tried last year to do every Monday, we'd have like video announcements instead and they'd help produce that. So we're looking to bring that back again this year, so.
Perfect. Any questions?
I just want to give a shout out to you guys and the Warrior Leadership Team for the Instagram post that you did during homecoming week. It was awesome. Just great seeing what was going on at lunch and all the competitions. It was, it was good to see.
Yep, thank you for everything. That was a great, great week.
Yep.
All right, next we have District Administrator comments.
Yeah, just a few things. And Daniel, the carnival, I heard from a lot of parents during and after just how much fun that was and how great that was and that they had that opportunity for their kids. So I know you were a part of that, so thank you. Few, just three things to talk about. A week from this Thursday, October 23rd, our Fall Elementary Math Night. It's going to be at Tainer Elementary. Everyone is invited from 4:30 to 6:30. So different activities, different things to do. Kiddles will have things they can take home as well. So Thursday, October 23rd at Tainer. Also, the week after, Thursday, October 30th, and Miriam's a big part of this, the Empty Bowls fundraiser for the Backpack Program. So it's going to be 4:30 to 7:00 PM in the Rice Lake High School Cafeteria. I think at this time, the program continues to grow. Miriam, 360 some, okay? About 300, it'll say 65 bags. I know it's over 360. So bags are packed on a weekly basis, you know, in a portion of our old boardroom. And so with that, so many people come together for that event. Was talking with Bruce Cowpanger last year, or last week, and just different people throwing pots and helping out and of course, local businesses donating soup. And for as little as $5, people can come and support it and it'd be a silent auction as well. Anything to add?
No, I think that's it. I mean, we just want people to come. We always have a lot of leftover soup, so it's, it's a cheap way to have dinner and it's a great community event. Lots of good silent auctions to bid on and cool pottery and wooden bowls.
Yeah.
And if you're a sponsor, you get free, it's been the last two years. Yep. If you're a sponsor, you get free tickets and so some of our board members get to come free now. So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. And then last thing, this Saturday, Easy Fundraiser for the All Sports Booster Club, Saturday, October 18th, Link Ford and RV has the Drive for Your School Event. So you can come, there was just a, right, late this afternoon, a Facebook post on our page was made for it. For every test drive you do, $30 goes to the All Sports Booster Club. There's free hot dogs there and we can earn up to $6,000. And I know I've talked to people before, Link Ford has done this many times over the years, afraid they're going to get a ton of literature and everything afterwards. You're not, just come. I see others, you know, shaking their head. No, just come, do the test drive, you earn $30, we can earn up to $6,000. Nellie, anything to add from, from Booster Club for that?
No, just please show up.
Oh, I don't have the time.
The next day, you'll get an email and you have to reply to that email and, and that's really all it is. But there is a little checkbox there that says, you know, do you want to keep receiving promotional? No, just click no or unclick it or whatever.
And you won't get stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Do you, it's on the Facebook post, I'm going to guess, I don't know, I can find it here maybe before the end of the meeting, but is as far as the time, but it's on our Facebook post.
And you don't actually have to take a test drive. You can just, you know.
I was going to say that, but I didn't, I didn't know if, I didn't know, I didn't know if it was okay to say that.
You can virtually drive it.
It is, and it's going to, here it is right here. It is 10 AM to 2 PM. So for anybody listening or watching, go to Link Ford, 10 AM to 2 PM Saturday, this Saturday, October 18th. There's a QR code there as well. Take a drive or at least sign up and earn 30 bucks for the.
Is that the same thing that they had in the parking lot here last year?
Yes, yep, exact same thing, so. And I know lots of times people will think, oh, I don't have to go, you know, other people will go, no, please go. We need people to show up. We need a couple hundred people to show up and yeah, it's going to be great. And they've got free hot dogs there as well. Who can beat that?
All right. Thank you for that update. With that, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851F, which is for the approval of our closed session meeting minutes from September 22nd and then 19.851E, and that's individual employee contract.
Move to go to closed.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, roll call, please.
Andrew Coop.
Yes.
Phil Hinkle.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Yes.
Miriam Barbara.
Thank you, yes.
Bert Richard.
Yes.
Nellie Shire.
Yes.
Doug Kuchko, Lori Zarbok and Don Kuski.
Yes.
All right. You're in closed.
Lori's in Italy.
All right.
Randy.
Give me, hang on one second.
I know, it looks so beautiful.
Squared away.